...two thousand seventeen. May we have the roll call?
Council members, Akajanian.
Chris.
Devine.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpadian.
Mayor Protem Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the October seventeen twenty seventeen special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Friday, October thirteen twenty seventeen on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you today is Director of Community Development and Public Works regarding potential downtown holiday trolley service. One A is a resolution appropriating one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars of the undesignated general fund balance to community development department's urban design and mobility budget, four three one one zero dash one oh one dash one eight seven. B is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to execute a service agreement with PCAM LLC, DBA Parking Company of America for a not-to-exceed amount of ninety-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for operation and maintenance. And C is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Creative Bus Sales.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This is something that emanated from this dais. Council member Devine had, as part of the GRIT program, went with other council members and staff to talk to some of the folks in the north end of Brand Boulevard in our downtown corridor. And one of the questions that was brought up is the viability of running a trolley service during the holiday season. So with council direction, we went and investigated further. And Mr. Lanzafame will walk you through a brief presentation that will further illuminate our findings.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, in July, as part of our transit summit, this topic came up. The City Council asked us to investigate, to do a holiday trolley service by the holiday season two thousand seventeen. So some of the actions we're asking today aren't maybe what we would normally do, but we were moving pretty quickly. So let me walk you through what we found out and some of our recommendations should you wish to go forward with the program. The purpose, we want to improve mobility. As Mr. Ochoa said, in some of our GRIT meetings, people talked about the need, the difficulty getting from the northern part of the downtown to the southern part. Office in the north and more of the recreation, food in the south. And so temporary community shuttle service, separate and distinct from our own transit service. We've listed some of the benefits. If it is unique enough and the experience is fun enough, will attract additional visitors. More importantly, will connect to different uses. Those employment centers in the north, parking facilities throughout the downtown, and then the major retail in further in the south, all going to promote our eighteen-hour city. And then we do have service in the downtown. This would promote greater frequency for that. We have done trolleys before. We talked about them. In two thousand eight, the city engaged in a trolley service as part of the opening of the Americana at Brand. We ran that in May and June. The Americana opened May second. We ran it for two months. The ridership was very low, at one point seven. That was funded by the redevelopment agency. We had the ability at the time to do that, funded by the agency. And so after two months with that ridership, we elected to discontinue the service. The Caruso team, independent of the city, started something, a trolley service in two thousand ten. They operated from May through September, October of two thousand ten. Started out with very good ridership, twenty-six passengers an hour. That increased to thirty-one. And then September, October, it dropped off significantly to about ten passengers an hour, at which point the Americana team discontinued the service. They have looked at it over the years, most recently about a year ago, but they have not decided to bring back the service.
Excuse me. Can I ask?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So we do not have any experience during the Christmas time or holiday time to run a trolley. Do we have that experience?
We haven't. And if we have, it would be before ninety-six, when I came. So in the recent last two decades.
Because those during the holiday season.
Yeah.
Those which you mentioned was during the year, like May until September. So we do not have any experience.
That's correct.
During the Christmas time.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So in envisioning the trolley service, we're trying to balance our objectives with funding sources. And this is a recommended trolley service if we're going to do, again, if we're going to do this. Twenty-minute headways, we would operate two buses, two trolleys, do it seven days a week, nine AM to eight PM, and then on the weekend, ten to seven, through that holiday season, just before Thanksgiving to just after, just after the New Year. The number of total service hours, that's just taking those days and the hours. This will become relevant as we start to look at cost and break that down. You see down at the bottom, the chart, total service hours for each of those runs through the week and then the weekend. We have two options to run the trolley on routes. Option A is Brand, what we call Brand-focused. That would simply loop on Brand Boulevard. It would come around, pick up the Americana, the Glendale Galleria, and then go back to Brand Boulevard. So you would have two buses, two shuttles, operating on Brand Boulevard. They would make that loop. Option B, Central Brand, that would just be one continuous loop. So the two shuttles would just go up Brand, turn around, come down Central, pick up the Galleria, over on Colorado, back up Brand again. Of the two, we would recommend option A, so that you have, you're concentrating that. We think that if people are going to use the shuttle from the residence, from Central Avenue, the urban dwellers, walking a block isn't going to be a big deal. But this way, we can concentrate all of our stops in that, in the Brand corridor. In terms of ridership estimates, I know, Mr. Najarian, you had asked us to come up with that. We don't have any experience, any recent experience with this. So we looked out to other agencies that would operate a similar trolley service. And as we'd said back in the summertime, the beach communities are where this is really operating. We looked at Laguna Beach, Dana Point, and San Juan Capistrano. Those were about the size that we're talking about. They operate during the summer months. It's free of charge, and they have headways similar to what we're looking at here, maybe a little bit less. They are beach destination communities, but it was the closest we could find to us. They average about twelve point seven riders an hour. Total ridership, then, we multiplied that over the number of hours, twelve hundred hours that you saw before, fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy would be the estimated ridership, if we were able to achieve that level. We also looked at the Glendale Beeline. Glendale Beeline operates two routes in the downtown. They average about eighteen riders per hour on an annual basis. We looked specifically to November and January and found ridership actually dips during the holidays on our Beeline, maybe out of school or what have you. But it dips to about ten riders per hour. So we use that as kind of a middle ground. That would be twelve thousand two hundred and sixty riders for the period that we're looking. We also used a conservative estimate, half of what the beach communities, again, we don't have any history to base this on, so we tried to give a range. Six point four is merely half of the twelve point seven, seventy-eight hundred and forty-six riders. So that's the best estimate we could give to you, a range of riders, given different indexes. We looked at getting, acquiring these trolleys. You can purchase them, or for the pilot program, we asked for a lease. These are the two numbers. They are for both trolleys. They're combined. Thirty-two, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars buys you two of these vehicles. Eighteen thousand six hundred and sixteen leases them for a period of time, for that two- or three-month period that we're looking at. One of the difficulties that we found were there are very few ADA-compliant vehicles out there on short notice. We can certainly go to a provider and ask for these vehicles. Certainly, if we were going to buy them, we customize them. That's about an eighteen-month lead time. So we were looking for something existing. We were very fortunate that the company we are recommending has two trolleys in Long Beach that can be used here in Glendale. Otherwise, we might have a little longer lead time in bringing them out from the East Coast.
So what happened in Long Beach?
I just think they're stored there.
They're stored there, and their inventory, not that they tried and it failed.
Are these, what kind of engines do they have?
I'm sorry. They're gasoline-powered?
Are they gas-powered?
Yeah. And that's, again, we're, we want to make the distinction that we're operating this separate from our normal transit system. If we were going to do this on a permanent basis, we'd probably want to look to CNG vehicles. But again, availability by November eighteenth, this is what we could do. We went out to about eight different operators that could operate these trolleys for us. Very short turnaround time, and these are the two cost proposals we got. This would be the drivers, maintenance, and whatever service of the vehicles they need. The firm that we're recommending, Parking Company of America, has a facility, or at least they have some storage capacity here in the city of Glendale, near Adventist Hospital. They were the low-cost proposal, at seventy-seven thousand four ninety-five. We would recommend a contingency on that, simply because we've never operated this before, and we would like to be able to have some cushion if we have unforeseen costs.
Excuse me. Excuse me, can I go back?
Sure.
That eighteen thousand is per month or for entire two months?
That's for two trolleys for the entire period, the two and a half months. That's our total cost, eighteen thousand.
Thank you.
This is the vehicle that we were, we were able to obtain. Again, if you wanted something that was open-air, it's more of a custom, a custom vehicle that would take us some time to get. But it does mimic the trolley, wooden benches, distinctive color in, of the vehicle itself. And so it's something different than the normal Beeline or Metro service that's operating the downtown now. Our cost, all-in, about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. This is the breakdown. One thing, we, our main costs are the lease of the vehicle and the operation. We have some other costs that we have, permit fees. We'll need these inspected by CHP. We'll have to make some signage for the routes. We'll want to do some marketing to make sure that people know that we're out with this project. We're adding a contingency on the project itself. That would just be the trolley lease and the other operational costs. We already have a contingency in the operational contract. So the total cost is a hundred and forty-three thousand.
Mr. Akajanian.
Could you go back, please? You say trolley lease is eighteen thousand. Then maintenance is ninety-two thousand?
That's maintenance and operation, so that's the drivers, the service, and maintaining the vehicles. Remember, we have, we'll have more than two drivers for twelve hundred hours.
Okay.
We wanted to break this down, the cost, in a cost-per-ride. This will be the analytic that we use when we come back to you, should you approve the program, so that you can see how much is this costing us. At the, at the high end, if we really hit a home run, and we're serving twelve, almost thirteen passengers an hour, nine, seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, that's on the base contract. We've also added, with the contingency, nine dollars and twenty cents. If we're, if we're not as successful, and at the lower end, it, that jumps to fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents a ride, or eighteen twenty-six with the contingency.
That's a tough graphic.
I wanted to give you all the information.
I know transit, transit operations are clearly expensive in the red. But at the high end, let's say our twelve point seven, we'd come out ahead if we went around and gave everyone a five-dollar bill who was waiting for a ride, and it'd be less than our budget.
I cannot disagree with you.
I think, but part of the idea as well, at the extent we understood it from council, was the, was this notion of having a feature, an amenity, an attraction in the downtown.
I know. I'm just saying, that's a tough, the fiscal side of me says...
If I, if I can, I just want to say that I agree with you, that that's a little bit shocking. But when you look at the total picture of the cost, the project cost, and the benefit, I think, to our residents, and on a trial basis, I think that kind of might soften the blow a bit.
Is this more for the, is this more for the residents, or is it for employees who work in North Glendale? I mean, I'm sorry, North Brand?
I'd submit to you that it's a little bit of both. And to the extent that you do have lots of visitors in the downtown, so it's tourists, it's residents, and to the extent that folks may want to ride this, you'll see the pictures or have seen the pictures of the trolley, it is, it's a little bit of an attraction in and of itself. It's, that's why we would, we would feel comfortable bringing it to you in the context of a pilot project, because I think the numbers, as Mr. Ak, as Mr. Najarian points out, kind of speak for themselves over a longer period of time. But as a novelty in the holiday season, that still serves a stated need, it could, you know, serve many masters without being too exorbitantly expensive.
And if I can, and if I can add, when I was on the GRIT visitations, of course, the businesses were telling me that they, they don't come down here for lunch. If they have celebrations or if they want to have lunch, they go, they hop on the freeways and go somewhere else. They don't come downtown. I've also heard, this is going to go all the way to Stalker, as I understand, from Colorado to Stalker. There are a lot of apartment buildings up there where seniors live, and I've heard from them that they have a hard time getting down to the downtown. And so this could benefit them as well, especially during the holiday season, when they may want to do shopping, or they may want to come down just to see the Christmas lights at the Americana or a Long Brand Boulevard. So it is serving, it would be serving, the entire population of our city, especially in that area.
I think, I'm sorry, if I could just add, one of the, were employees, yes, that's where the impetus grid. You remember, you had somebody come here on, in July, and say, I live up there, and I absolutely would bring my grandchildren. I think the third area that we're, we want to look at very closely is how many people are avoiding parking by using a shuttle to come down and either go to the Galleria or the Americana. My car is parked at work. I don't want to go down and look for a parking space, so I'll take the shuttle. So that would be another metric.
This is going to impact our revenues.
I'm sorry.
This is going to impact our parking revenues.
We're, we're an hour and a half, we're an hour and a half free anyway. We'll fill it.
I cannot support cost-per-ride for eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and for very limited benefit, which is people who live around, let's say, North Brand, you're talking about, we will benefit by people who will not bring their car downtown. But there is no room even around north of Glendale to park. It's very hard to park anywhere. So I don't see how we will benefit from parking somewhere else and ride on this bus and pay eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents per ride. However, if this is so important to do, I have two recommendations. First, to run the bus on Central and Brand, not just the Brand, so this way, businesses on Central should benefit too. And the second thing would be to write something on the side of the bus, that what it is. But I'm not happy with paying eighteen dollars twenty-six cents. They can take taxi or Uber for three dollars from north of Brand to, there, it will be only three dollars or four dollars, and nobody will come to park. I mean, they're not going to bring their car, if that's the point, that we are trying to avoid people to drive to downtown Glendale and park their car, and that that time is very hard to find any spaces. So they will take the Uber. If we have enough parking north of Glendale, so they will stop there, and they will take Uber for three, four dollars, or Lyft. I mean, I don't want to advertise for Uber, but that's my opinion.
How close are you to the end of your presentation? Because I know that there's a lot of questions that are...
Just last slide, some logistics. Shuttle stops, we would plan to stop, to the extent we can, using our own bus stops. North of Glen Oaks, that's not an issue. In the downtown, we would have to coordinate with other services, Beeline and MTA. And through the holiday, that gets a leave-in a little bit more hectic. We would, we will look for red zones near the bus stops where we could park there, or we may have to take parking, on-street parking for the shuttle stop. But that's something that we still need to work through. Storage, I had mentioned that we should be able to store those locally, in a yard close to Adventist. Marketing and signage, that's going to be a big push for us. Social media, we'll really tax Tom Morenza's team to help us get the word out. We'll go to the building official management organization, BOMA, the realtors, everybody that's involved with office management, and make sure that they're aware. And then we will want to have some, some solid analytics, number of riders, the cost, where they're coming from, where they're going to, so that we can bring that back and evaluate the program. That completes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. And again, the team is here. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Okay, so let's...
Is Devine one of this?
Ms. Devine, you were ready. Do you have some questions?
Well, I was just going to say that the, another point I wanted to make is the fact that, you know, we're talking about how many riders, passengers, we might have. And this, this number that is projected here could be to, it's a conservative number, correct? So it, we could have a ridership that's, that's more than that, and come...
We don't think we would get more than twelve riders, thirteen riders. Our Beeline service, although it's a different service, Beeline, for the most part, Mr. Najarian, you had asked this question back in the summer, how much are we going to cannibalize? Most of our Beeline riders are taking it from the downtown to the transportation center. So they would not be candidates for the shuttle service. But we, we, it'd be great if we had more than thirteen riders, but that would be about on par with our normal Beeline service. And so we, we're not sure that we could actually double our service with this ridership, but we do...
And I also think that we're, we're looking at the numbers from the past, and, you know, a lot has changed in the downtown since two thousand and, what were these dates?
Two thousand and ten, and that's a very good point.
Two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten. So we have a lot more to offer in our downtown. And I just, from what I heard, we may see a big, you know, a lot of passengers on this trolley. But I'm going to leave it at that. I can see that it is an expense, but I think it's, it's a pilot program, and I, I just feel it's worth a try for the holidays.
Mr. Sinanian.
Do you know what the per-passenger cost is for us for Beeline? And then I'm going to ask Mr. Najarian what it is on the average for the MTA. Two seventy.
About two dollars, two dollars and seventy cents a rider.
Wow. So MTA, we, we have about a, all things.
All things.
In, we have about a thirty percent Fairbox recovery rate. So I would say it's about, it's, it's two dollars probably at the very cheapest.
We're, it's a good point, something that we look at when we're talking about, do we draw any riders away? We don't think we'll draw any riders away. But something we want to be careful about is our Fairbox return is around sixteen percent. Our target is twenty. So we, we need to do some work on that as it is.
Actually, let me be a little more clear. Probably MTA is closer to four, between four to five dollars a ride per person, not the, not the two dollars. Forget the two dollars.
I ask the question not out of concern for sort of losing riders to our own bus line. I'm trying to, you know, find a reason for myself to approve a best-case scenario, nine-twenty per ride kind of a scenario, by, you know, finding out what it costs us to do our, our service and then MTAs. And, I mean, ours is obviously far below the nine-twenty. That is the best-case scenario here, so...
Well, I also want, I also think this is a different ridership than we're talking about with the Beeline and the Metro, and, you know, with comparing those costs. This is, this is, people that live in, up in the north side, above Glen Oaks, that have to take more than one bus to get down to the Galleria or the Americana. It's difficult for them to get there. The businesses, they don't have the time to get the Beeline, and they don't want to get on the Beeline. They want something that's a little bit more, a little friendlier, you know, where you can meet people, and, I mean, different, it's a different kind of ridership that we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking pure dollars and cents. I mean, I'm not, I'm not comparing the type of individual, type of demographic that's going to ride one bus line or the other. I'm concerned about how much is, how justified is it physically to approve this? And I don't want to be the Grinch. I mean, I want to be, I want to spread holiday cheer, but at what cost?
Mr. Akajanian.
Yeah. I'm looking at these figures, passengers per service. It's six point four, let's say if it's six point four. It means in an hour, I mean, let's assume there is one person in a car, because sometimes people, they ride together. So if it's six point four passenger per service, per hour, it might be like four cars per hour. We're going to have four cars less coming downtown. That's all we will save. And we are paying eighteen dollars and twenty-six, twenty-five cents, twenty-six cents to justify cost per ride. I mean, what we are saving, four cars, less cars will come toward downtown. How much that going to bring the difference? What's the difference? Let them drive.
But it's not, but it's not just, just a matter of who is not going to get in their car that is going to get on this bus. It's also a matter of who that otherwise wouldn't come downtown is going to come downtown because they have this trolley available.
So, so...
Economically, that could be...
And trickle-down effect, yeah.
So a couple of points I'd like to make. I know the Be, the Beeline runs to Stalker, both directions. So someone who wants to go from Stalker to the Galleria or to the Americana, it's a one-seat ride.
Correct.
The other point I want to make is, well, first, you know what? Let me just be honest. My head says no way on earth should I vote for this. But my heart, my heart says that my colleague, Ms. Devine, has a pulse on the community that perhaps I don't always have, or that is, that is, that I'm blind to. So I want to support my colleague with this, with my heart. And I'm going to, I'm going to say, let's, and I would say, let's go forward with this. I would suggest that, a couple things to throw out. Number one, is there any advertising opportunity to defray the costs? Worry about, I mean, that's a complete discussion, but let's not just assume that, no, that there's no advertising. The second is, I think the, I think the convenience is going to be a bidirectional service on Brand. So although the, the attempt to pick up Central Avenue would create a wider swath, it would only give riders a one-way, north to south, on Brand, they'd have to, you know, have to wait for a circle to get back to where they, they wanted to go. My third point is that if we're going to market this, let's market it in conjunction with the Beeline. with the Beeline. That, you know, you want to go downtown, you have two options. You know, ride our Holiday Express shuttle or our Stallworth Beeline. That way, we can maybe get some additional marketing for the Beeline. But that's where I'm at. I'm going to say, let's support it. I hope the numbers, I hope I'm wrong with my numbers, and even if it's, even if my numbers are right, I hope that it adds something intangible that are outside the spreadsheets here that we're presented with in terms of the numbers. So that's where I'm at, Ms. Devine. You got my heart. My head says hell no, but my heart says, let's try it. It could be, in best case, the glass half-full, it'll be fun, it'll get people involved in transit in many different forms, it'll develop some shopping along, not just the Americana, but also along the mid-brand area, the restaurants and the shops, and we'll benefit from some joint marketing with the Beeline, and we'll be able to say this was a good deal.
Mr. Najarian, to help you calm your beating heart, I would say that, yes, you're correct, from Stalker, south, you can take one Beeline. We'll actually be going a little bit further north. So if there are elderly people that even can't get to Stalker for a Beeline, the shuttle will go up that high.
Oh, it's going to go to Mountain?
It'll go up to Mountain is what we're looking at.
A little longer, okay.
We also want to, we also will want to advertise that you could park at the Orange Street Garage, say, take the shuttle down and then come back. It will stop at different parts throughout our downtown, so it won't merely be serving the Galleria and the Americana, if those help you at all.
You might want to run it through Central to get people to Phoenicia. You know, there's a couple of good stops along the way on Central and the Galleria as well. Just a thought.
I'm not going to weigh in on the route, just my thoughts are out there, and I'll let...
I will, I'm sorry.
Mr. Sinanian and then Mr. Agagianian.
So as, you may have guessed from my comments, I'm very conflicted about this also, because the sort of the cold numbers are a little jarring, but I think my colleague put it well. I have an additional reason to support this, because I think this may give a sort of a phantom taste of what's to come in Glendale, which is our streetcar. This is a sort of a test run of, if we do the Brand and Central route, I think, it'll may instill in people the idea of, you know, maybe we can get around on public transportation. And with the idea, of course, of rail, of, you know, it's a cleaner source of transportation and more modern, ironically. I think it's a good idea. I think it'll be good for the holidays. It'll give a certain spark to our holiday efforts. I don't think we'd do anything other than what DGA does with, you know, sprucing up Brand, right? So this will be something we'll be doing.
You can put a wreath on there, maybe?
Yeah. The colors are already obviously...
My heart. I'm reading your heart.
So, you know, again, it's for a limited period of time, and I'm really rooting for it. I'm hoping it's going to be financially not a very bad investment, so I'm going to support it.
Mr. Agagianian.
I cannot see how people who are living in northwest will benefit from this, or Adams Hills, or other places. This is very limited, the benefit would be for very limited people, as we have mentioned here, 6.4 passengers per service per hour or service hour. And we are paying, I don't know how they, those people, or those businesses, actually, they're going to benefit this. This is, will be good for downtown businesses, but I don't see the benefit to those who have businesses other places, and those who are living other places except Brand, Central, and north of Brand. So I don't see it, and I cannot support cost-per-ride of $18.26 where they can take, as I said before, Lyft and Uber for $3 or $4 and get, and do the same thing that what we are trying to accomplish. But however, it's not that important to me, one way or another. I'm not going to vote for it, but it doesn't bother me if others are voting for it. But $18.26 absolutely doesn't make sense.
Okay, just to point out that 18.26 is the worst-case scenario. It could be 920. I'm just saying.
920, still is $3.
I'm saying it, but it's not 18. It's not 18.26.
Still is too much. We are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and does not make sense.
How about a bell? Are you going to have a bell, too?
Put a bell on.
Sure. I don't want to get into the details, but I want a bell.
Scott Ocho's like, sure, give him a bell.
Again, he's reading my mind. Again, this is getting scary.
Okay, sorry. Anything else, Ms. Devine?
This is getting scary.
I've got one thing. We are asking for resolution of appropriation, and then the authority for the manager to enter into two contracts. I do need some direction on the route. I have heard Brand, and I've heard Central, and I've heard, I prefer not to run the shuttle.
Brand is...
Okay. Okay, let's...
And I've talked to people, including members of the chamber, and they feel that the circular route is, would be the better of the two. Is there any way that, like, if we eliminate some of the hours, would that decrease our, not that it would decrease it by a lot, but like, starting at 11 instead of 10? I mean, would that change the...
I don't know. I don't know that it would. They've got to commit staffs out here. We can go back and ask the question, but these are the hours that we would recommend for a robust service.
Well, I'm really happy about my colleague's support. I'm hoping that this really works out as well. I think marketing is going to be the most important process here, because we have to let people know that it's out there and that we're doing this for the holidays. So let's work really hard at this. Great? And actually, I have had an offer from the chamber to have a, some sort of a event on the first ride, so maybe we can make that happen.
Does the chamber want to contribute to?
I, oh, I didn't, I didn't ask them that.
About the DGA?
Well, that I think we've tried.
We can ask the question. My thought is that if this is successful, then next year, we can be looking at alternate funding sources, not only grants to operate it, but partners. I don't know that they would, without a track record, want to jump on, but we will ask a question.
Okay, Ms. Devine, do you have a motion?
I'll move the item, A and B.
Mr. Sinanian, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga, Johnian?
No.
Devine?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes. We have no other business on our calendar.
I'll move for German.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We are a German, and we do have closed session, so...